She made the second, all the people say aye. Aye. King Center, get that.
The most consented agenda?
Further, Michael.
Yeah.
All the people say aye.
Aye.
Public input.
Yeah, um, thank you. I wanted to speak today on behalf of the Kingsville Riders Stone Wheel Club. We manage the, uh, the trail system that, uh, runs from Swansea to, well, Westmoreland and all the way up to, uh, this. Uh, we had three projects that we submitted for this year. And, uh, we submitted these, we have a thousand dollar pond where any work being done on the trails as well as other dollar filing. Uh, we submitted projects that are in three towns on the trail system for this year. Um, the state rejected that because you have to file a separate, um, application for each town. Unfortunately, the stone building club can't front three thousand dollars in three separate applications. So my request is that the town of Swansea would fund that thousand dollar refundable bond plus a hundred dollar filing fee or two washouts on the northern end of, uh, the actual trail just south of the actual, um, bridge. So work could be performed by a contractor, should be completed by the end of the year. And once the work is complete, we need to, uh, notify the state, uh, for completion of the project, they would refund that.
So this would be funded from the real estate advisory committee, so I didn't spoke to them long there. I think they have their money allocated, but it sounds like it's probably just going to be a temporary. While the bond is, while the bond is closed, and you said you were hoping to have more done for the year, so I think that consideration will. I think it's an opportunity to make progress on both small ones.
Do you have to figure out?
I'll make that motion and.
Any second, any further discussion? All the people say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
I'll touch you on the rest. Thank you for that information.
Any other public input? Anybody online here?
Um, not yet.
Thank you. Start off with our appointment, Stratton Library Trustees. Twenty twenty-five budget. Come up to the chair for the.
Well, we have to come to the chair. You've got a whole, you've got all the money.
Somebody, somebody sit next to me. Somebody, somebody, somebody sit next to me.
Somebody sit next to me.
Full chair. Okay, full chair.
With any questions? This is a, I'm having a one percent increase over last year's budget, but last year's budget was a seventy percent decrease. So, we're not.
On, on the three-year average. What's the, uh, the budgeting for repair maintenance?
Um, well, we're hoping, we're expecting that, um, the evening spend money for survey for the boundary line at the library. Um, we want some kind of solution with the cellar for the troughs that are collecting water and humidity in the basement. Edition. So it's causing, maybe so far, I'm just looking for damage. And ventilating the library so that there's easier to eat and hopefully cool because we also want, um, because they're fishing.
So, what, what's the issue with the basement? Is there a sump pump there?
There's a sump pump, but it, um, be humidified, but it's just not keeping up.
What do we think is due?
Well, they did install some of the French drain, but they didn't really complete it and really didn't do it to a very high standard. Um, so it seems like we need to get that resolved, ideally we get some covers of some kind or the troughs and have it subdrained better to the sump pump. We installed a cover over the sump pump, uh, to try to cut down on evaporation. Um, but it still seems to be a very moist area. We actually went to the summer when we didn't have rain and it was fine. But when we, uh, have rain, uh, quite a bit of water comes in. And I'm not sure if that's the same budget item, but we had a lot of burner issues last winter.
Yeah, that's a little bit of, but then with air.
We're, we're hoping we'll be a little better off this year.
So, we, we, we'll prompt my question was having gone through about real line adjustment and, and the costs that were incurred for that, which were relatively minor work, a home two thousand dollars doesn't seem like it's kind of gross.
No.
Either of those, e- either the, the foundation issue or basement issue or the survey, I mean, yeah, the sort of thing. So is it possible that you could try to get some estimates ahead of time before this is finalized? So you know what your actual costs are gonna be? That's one question. The second question is, with, with the lack of progress to no one's fault, to be able to achieve either easement or boundary line adjustment. Would it be, in my opinion, premature to consider a, a mini split system for twenty twenty-five? Especially without there being an estimate at least. And the estimate could be based on something we can't do without eminent domain. So just from my perspective, seems like there's some work that you're gonna do that would be beneficial to you.
Well, I know that, um, Stefan came over and, right?
Right.
Right? He heard him do that.
Well, he was looking, I think he had a number of ideas on what to do, put the new splits in. And I think he was looking at kind of a two-tiered system, um, one unit in one room and another one. Actually, I think that somehow involved a chimney. But I don't have.
I don't think he moved forward because he's bringing on the boundary line issue.
Right, I think.
That's his decision to do.
That side door where you met me, is that used as anything other than an emergency heat vest? Was there any discussion about bringing the lines out on that side and bringing them onto that landing where the condensing unit could be? Because if that, if that was possible, and if, if that was done, you would need an easement floor or a boundary line adjustment.
Yeah, I don't have that boundary line, uh, that in front of me. They're actually, I don't think, was very much.
Just like nothing.
Land, uh, by the library even on that side.
Yeah, there was a foot.
Yeah.
There was about a foot with your, with your railing.
Right.
And that potentially is enough to bring the lines over and run them along the building. I, I don't know.
Yeah, I think.
I see that to run the lines all over the building and have the condenser over. My only concern would be what comes off the roof there in the winter.
I think that could be, could be handled by, by, it may not be the most aesthetically pleasing. But if we're not getting cooperation in order to avoid, um, delaying through that process, it should be worth, I think, looking into as to whether it could be done.
But still think the boundary line needs to be addressed though.
For sure, because they might, because one part, but we own the half the driveway. So it'd be nice to, to continue with that anyway, but it's, if it's not gonna. It's gonna keep us from getting their condition to see the time.
Are we, we'd be willing to, to work with you to help facilitate the discussion, but you gotta get.
Right.
To the point where they're willing to talk about it.
Can you explain to me just a little bit about the boundary line and that last, I haven't made that, but, uh, the boundary line, is it too close to the building?
Yeah.
And we need more space? And the people that own the other part, it's good to negotiate with them.
They should, like, they didn't realize that they don't own their driveway. Their driveway, when they purchased their home, we took it down a few years.
It's weird, there's a little, like, shape, it's their driveway.
We own part of their driveway.
And we need that for the condenser, for space, is that a reason?
No, we need, they own, the way the building is here, right, the building is built like right on the boundary line. We, ideally the place puts the condenser at the back of the building, but they own like right up to there.
When the addition is added, but we additioned, so there's no new way.
And so, we were negotiating to maybe take a little bit, but this, that whole area back there is where their children, like, so they've got their place structure. They've got all of their stuff back there. But then it also turns out, I believe, what, like, we think is their wow might, is also like right very close on the side part. So there's a lot of unknowns in it. And so I've been, um, in contact with them and trying, we did, we had one meeting with them and offered up some options. And then they wanted to offer up some other options, but then they haven't gotten any further. And having difficulty getting them to, uh, have another meeting.
So it's the idea of just the boundary line, sort of.
We offered, um, less, given their driveway and they're taking a very small bit enough around to do what we need to do. And in fact, I think we were maybe gonna be getting less out of it.
Right.
We were gonna be losing.
But we did gain some property at the very end of the building, which would be an ideal location to put the unit in for the air conditioning.
And the exhaust might actually extend, uh, to the.
From the front, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. How did this come about? Like, how did we find out after we said, but then, how did it?
Well, we always know, we, I don't know how long we know, we went as, the previous owner sold it, we knew that, you know, kind of, back in, it's a long time. I think when Citizens was selling the property, brought it up, that they, they were like, oh, then it's closed. Yeah, they're like, excuse me.
That's seen all they've spent in years.
That is, that is.
Jimmy, that's why it's important to have a good realtor in your life. Hey, should you ever have a need?
I was expecting that. No. It's a little flood here.
I think they were probably about to. I think they wanna progress. So I did, anyway, I think those things would be helpful for, for you to, to, to be able to afford the survey, afford the smaller work. And, and we, we should, or collaboratively, might, we can try, to try to spin in that process.
Follow up your guy later, I don't, I don't.
I know, and I, I don't know, maybe, I'm not the person anymore, if we, maybe something needs to come officially.
Need something here. But I think.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm just, or, or more official than me just saying, hey. We want to be, we want to, yeah, we want to be, that's, you know, there. Library regions, I don't want a very, uh, something, you know.
I think we're probably ready for another meeting to sit down and we just plan out a timeline and a process. Trying to get this resolved, what's going on, it's so long now. I think, was it, was it this time last year or was it this?
I think it was a year ago.
Can I go back to the, the cellar floor of the French drain?
Right.
So basically, did they kind of trench along the, the, they entered the foundation and lead into the sump pump hall?
They did, they did.
And when you say it wasn't finished, did they continue with the?
It doesn't go around the whole perimeter. There's, uh, one section of wall where there'd be some trench. So it's kind of on, most of it's on two parallel sides. And, um, does flow towards a, a sump pump.
What size humidifier do you have down there now?
I was wondering if we needed something bigger.
These humidifiers work pretty good, because I had to put them in my, um, cellar of my pump houses. And, and I had one in there and the guy came and I thought, it ain't working. And then all of a sudden, he said, Jimmy, you gotta have the right size of right man. And, and if you weigh that out of how much space you have to the humidifier, that could solve the problem. And the evaporation is a big point, we put up some French drain into the sump pump. I did it all and it worked beautifully and it was just a matter of me getting the right, um, humidifier for the area, for that area. So does the humidifier drain into the sump pump?
It does.
Yeah. I think we should take, I would love to see us take a peek at that too, because that could save quite a bit of money if that solves the problem. You know what I mean?
Right. But I think our, um, we also have somewhat of an issue with water kind of leaking up through the concrete floor.
There is a crack in the wall.
So I think that kind of adds to the humidity as well.
With a lot of table goes out during the season.
A lot of.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. When it's raining, there's plenty of water in the trough, yeah, and rains, yeah, around, you know, near the walls.
Did you look down there and see it, this sump?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or a little, a minute's time to be away.
I think I'm gonna take a ride over, just so you can show me, so I can physically see what I'm gonna talk about.
Especially since you have experience with similar situations.
Oh, yeah, a lot of, of sump pumps and all that, it's great. I'll take a look and then.
We have figured out.
It's all right, I'll ask Michael, Michael set it up.
Tuesdays and Thursdays, two thirty to four.
Two thirty to seven.
Michael, Michael goes, I like Michael, I can, Michael, I'll take a road trip with me.
But I've been also.
Do you do the brush one? Do both libraries?
Yeah. Well, yeah, and also right around the corner too, so it doesn't have to be a world, they're not making arrangements.
That was on our plan, but we never got to that, so we'll make sure we do it on our plan.
So should this be operating budget?
O C I P C.
We, I think, in many splits, would be C I P C. How about others? You know, I think.
Budget for, for survey, if change, I think Michael concluded.
I'm more concerned about the crack in, in this cement.
We'll take a look at that though, because if that only happens when the water table's up, we can fix that, we can figure out that. But I think we could save a lot of money on that end, so you can have the money for what we use if we need it. Come on.
Do you have the others on the building?
I don't have.
I don't, well, it's, uh, I can't remember the roof, my, it's, which you picked out. Things water coming off.
See, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to. And I don't know, I mean, I don't know if that affects, we're on the floor, okay, so, for instance, so I don't know. Kind of, I do just fine, I don't know. But I thought, I thought it was.
We just put headers and so.
We already, okay, and you could do headers.
We just put brand again, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And what about the big tubes, two from the, from the east coast?
We did two.
No, on the outside, I'm, I'm not that near, south side of the building.
I think you could involve.
Yeah, I'm kind of, I believe, uh, same line, I didn't.
Somebody online here? I didn't know if you had your hands on it.
I bumped this with my head and I was trying to make sure I didn't switch it to like eighty degrees on Michael or something.
Well, what should? Surprise. What you're budgeting is less than what you realized through September.
You aren't going to need the catalog for cards? So what you're gonna be?
No, well, you didn't really leave us, so I don't know. I'm not sure. It was just that.
We left it, I think, what we had to do last year.
Yeah.
Um, I think I had bought some checks last year. I'll, that's a big, um, expense, I'm thinking.
Well, in twenty-three, you were knocking, last year you came at five hundred under, you're seven hundred over. And then install that quarter, so there's a couple.
Oh, I think that the, we, I mean, that was a cart, so we had not, that we hadn't landed on, probably had a cart.
So there's, there's nine hundred dollars off of it, was it one time?
Yeah. And shipping on that too was included, on three hundred twenty-five, so we don't need to.
Just hang on a second, is that your? Should we, Jimmy? I'll send, come on.
Thank you. We did, uh, still, I know, Theresa, we did discuss all the invoices and any kind of third account as of, uh, as of.
I did, yeah, I haven't actually come here for a while.
What would you think you'd be able to come back with, with information on the survey?
Who would we call for this year? And then we have work to make, well, John Bridges originally did it.
Yeah, John Bridges, he's interested in the bill, but. Yeah, he, he's on. I already contacted him. I'll send it, so. I, I can send you, we, we. Okay. Both of you, all of you?
Uh, yeah.
No, one, seven.
No.
If it goes to one, we go to all of them.
Yeah, I mean, you can just send it to me and I can send it out to her. But when you send, when I say send it to me, send it to the library? Because I just realized that Stefan sent a thing to me, but he sent it to my personal email and then it got buried and I still feel, feel, if he was wondering why I'm acting like.
He was.
He didn't go to the library email.
Okay.
Okay, great.
And I am not successful in finding someone who does the French drains, if the town is aware of someone who might, might have that.
Can I change the status?
What's that? Can I do? Trying to find someone who might modify our French drain, so we have to call the, correct?
We don't know who.
Yeah, so when I come to visit, we'll look at it and then I'll, and I'll suggest who we could get to figure out what kind of covers would be needed and all that.
I'll let you guess.
Yeah. Because we gotta make sure we put something that's gonna be durable enough, but won't, you know, we won't put stale and rust and all that. We gotta make sure it's a good interior cover. But you got a good point, like, you know, evaporation, it happens. You know, if you have water sitting there.
Right.
And we can, we do that and we look at the humidifier and we can solve a lot of this, this thing. I'm hoping that's our answer.
Thank you very much.
You got it.
Thank you. Thank you. About Caesar, if I heard you just speaking. Did you, did we get rid of last year?
Well, we did. I did that off season, but she's.
Why didn't I ask Michael before yesterday, and asked you to bring in last year's? So we, we had history to go, go by.
Oh, from twenty twenty-three, oh, I didn't get that.
And what twenty-three actual was, what twenty-four budgeted was, you know, where you argued, what you've given us is your debate.
Yeah, oh, okay, I didn't get that message, I'm sorry.
I guess, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I was not all that.
See if I have.
I put it all on you.
Well, you can call me the four times extra, so, because I just couldn't say.
Well, how about this? This was a treasure to report from last, for CDA, doesn't it, twenty twenty-one? Does that work? We can have.
These others in the right hand?
Um, I think I have a.
So tell us what you want to spend your money on.
Yeah, well, first of all, we want to thank you for all of the support you guys have given us. And you guys for a lot of money over the last year, paid off with our library, uh, youth service library. She is really, I mean, she's felt great, she's had seventeen county programs going and with the, with the construction that we did. We got enough programables, we've got more stuff going on, we got a movie night going on, Saturday night, so we're doing really well. Pay for the, I mean, all good. So I think the, the overall increase is two point nine percent this year. Parents for some of these years.
What would you have increased, you have more?
There's a lot more. We had, we had, I don't remember what it was, but we had asked for a salary increase for, for our youth service library to have her work. She requested it work a whole other day.
That was last year you asked for that?
Yes, for twenty twenty-four.
And this year's increase will be made with?
It's over two points, it's two point nine overall. A, a big increase in programming, because we were close from January, March for that construction. We would have ran on money by the end of this year for programming if we were open for those three months. And we, we've, um, we have enough now to the end of this year. Um, we also are asking for an increase for custodial. Our cleaning person is not doing the job and, and we pay them two hundred dollars a month. We need four hundred dollars a month to hire a cleaning company. I don't know what you guys committed at all, but.
We're between, between cleaning.
Oh, really? Maybe we should commit some now, because.
Yeah, we just hired someone to, to do this building that they were doing for about a month.
It's hard to, it's hard to find.
Either it's like twenty dollars or you're, you know, you got a vehicle where it's like thousands of dollars and it's not worth it.
I think if people not show up and they're supposed to meet with us, not return emails, I mean, it's, it's.
It's a great, we're on, they're the winner, so.
Wow.
It's one of those. So, yes, that's where the.
Maybe she talked before me. Anyway.
Even, even four, even four hundred a month, depending on how long, how long you want.
That was a call we got from the guy that we're thinking of hiring anyway. The HX, we have to ask for a little more money in building, because our HX maintenance is three thousand dollars a year. But, and we were saving money, well, we won't be buying any more oil, because we put, we put in a whole HX, so. Yeah. Um, let's see what else. Um, you know, downloadable books are increasing all the time, that, that is going up. And so, people that, uh, our cover books are, uh, going up over thirty bucks a, um, piece, so. That's, you know, that's, interiors are just getting more expensive. And these are things that we, that are popular, yeah, yeah, downloadables and of course the books. Um, as far as payroll goals, we're asking for, um, pay, had now thirty dollars and sixty-two cents, which, uh, we're going up from twenty-seven eighty-three. So that's like a two hu, two dollar and seventy-nine cent increase an hour. And that kind of gets her where she should be as far as equitable with other towns, our size, um, when they pay their library directors. So it's a little bit, what we pay her now, it means that less than, that the thirty dollars and sixty-two cents will get her up to, uh, a more, better level for her. And staff is gonna increase from seventeen eighty-five to nineteen dollars an hour. So that is a one dollar and fifty cent increase an hour. So I think, yeah, the big points, uh, increase.
Can we go back to, um, the cleaning?
Yes, yes, we can.
Uh, the cleaning thing? Tell me a little about that, but what is, what do they specialize in cleaning, the, the employees that we have?
We get a one guy come and clean our, our building and he's just not, he doesn't vacuum a lot of the time, he doesn't take the trash out. We pay him two hundred dollars a month and, you know, it's just the same, a regular one guy doing it. And I think we need more professional cleaning, because the library's gotta be clean. And, you know, he doesn't just.
How often does this, how often do you dispatch?
Once a mo, once a week.
One?
One day a week.
One day a week.
Yeah, and that has always been, yeah, but, I think, but, but, um, I mean, I think that's all we need, just one a week, but, but, um.
In the hours that we have open, we got one person there at all times, is that how it works?
Yes, usually two.
Usually you have two people?
Yeah, the library director first, three hours a week, I think, and, I think Andrea and.
Is that the library director that's coming to go to the thirty sixty-two?
Yes.
So she's, she's in charge of?
Of the library.
Of the whole library, okay.
And Kat.
And the people under were seventeen and you want them to go to nineteen?
Yes, so Donna works twenty-four hours a week and, um, Andrea and I think it's up to thirty hours a week now. She's a youth service librarian.
How many days does Kate work, please say?
I'm sorry.
Believe that's me in the thirty.
Kat, yeah, Kat, Kat, Kat. K A D D I, Kat.
How many hours does she work?
Thirty.
Let's see. Do they get the same hours as this side there?
No, we, we're open more.
You're open more?
We're open thirty hours.
Thirty hours?
Yeah.
What days do you close? Weekends?
We're, we're closed on Fridays and Sundays. We're very good.
Fridays and Sundays?
Yeah. You know, I think many years ago they were open on Fridays, but they did this austerity measure just before my time. Because there was, I don't know what was going on, but they decided to close libraries on Friday. We could never entertain that thought one year and everybody went ballistic, so we kind of forget about it. We're open right now.
So, so Mary, in these two columns, one is your actual through the end of August? And then the other one, is that what you projected through that time period or is that through?
Which one are you looking at? Help with the profit and loss?
Yeah. Is the year-to-date budget through, through August or is it?
This one is, oh.
Eight months?
No, this is just what he, this is what our treasurer gave me today. And what we spent so far.
From January to August?
From January to the end of August.
So eight months?
Yeah, this is eight months.
Well, you got four months, something is a different.
He said that we're waiting on a $4,000 bill from the insurance company for, uh, on the building in town. And, um, he also said that most of our book purchases came from the end of the year. So we, with that in mind, you see exactly what he says, definitely, I, it's a little low right now.
So what, what is year-to-date budget? What is that? It should be a hundred and forty-four thousand. I said it would be about twelve thousand a month. So I think what they just did was, they're going over for the eight months. So that should be one forty-four.
I think that's.
For, for the annual, what, for the year-to-date budget? If it's eight months, it's ninety-six.
Right.
Not, not for the year-to-date, year-to-date would be ten months. So you're looking. Well. All right, yeah, so year-to-date, yeah. I'm just trying to figure. Somebody saying it that way, but the annual budget is a hundred and forty-four. Yeah, so. Well, I'm trying to figure out, Mary, what, what column, what, what is this column indicating? Is it the annual budget? Is it what you, what you would have, what you budgeted through the end of August?
I asked him for what, what, what did you ask for?
What you want for actuals.
Right, and this is what he sent me. Sorry, I'm not very good.
Well, you, you explained. You, you did explain the insurance because there's about a $4,000 difference.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if this column is the annual budget.
Yes, yeah, it is.
If it's a year-to-date budget, you know, looks through the end of August and you're just comparing your actual against what you projected, then it's, it's something different.
That, I feel like this is just still off.
Exactly what it is.
Yeah. Okay. Why?
I think in terms of trying to, um, help, with you, help you analyze your budget, this isn't helpful.
Okay.
But like, for example, you've got, you know, repairs are, are thirty thousand against a budget of a hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And I didn't see anything here that is, you know, close. You got building maintenance and repairs of sixteen thousand. But what, what was that thirty? Was it part of your capital improvement or was this an unusual expense?
Which one?
The thirty thousand. It's maybe only sixty-seven. It's under the repairs, right? So it's like something bad happened and we do, that's when you're not yet, you're ready to buy.
Yeah, no, I think we wanted to come. Oh, yeah. Is that the end? We painted the building and it was twenty-six and almost thirty thousand. Sorry, I'm not very.
We just, that's what we need is a charger area.
And the miscellaneous other income? Sixty-three twenty-six. From your, your programs, you did some of it?
Miscellaneous other income.
So it'd be three hundred. I think to help, what, what we're trying to avoid is the scenario you presented. That if you had been open those months at the beginning of the year, you'd be closed down because you couldn't operate. So we're, we're just trying to make sure that
Yeah.
this, this accounts for your increase in payroll. Also, I might be missing it, it might be wrapped in here, but, um, your utilities, you show it on, on this column, but I don't, I don't see it in the projected expenses for twenty-five.
On this one? I think on your building and maintenance, that might be, um, you talked about the budget, actual budget request. I think he included that under the building and maintenance at sixteen thousand three hundred and sixty-four.
So, uh, I think, I think we just would appreciate having something more specific so you don't end up with what you're, with, with what could have happened this year.
Well, I know that with, if we increase our pro, I think he increased, wanted to increase the programming by a thousand dollars, that would definitely, um, make, make, you know, we would not be running out of money without. So what, what you know, what you have at yours and, and something?
Michael could show you the, the format that we typically see from, from departments.
Okay.
Could be modified.
Basically, something a big thing where you still have some, but I didn't ask what was the 2023 actuals of budget, right?
Yep.
So we, we could probably, we extend that to twenty twenty-three?
We know, we know what our, our appropriations are under the current ones.
We don't have a program.
So.
We don't have any second one for that this time last year.
It's here?
Oh, well, I don't assume.
That's, that was really my, my question in regards to this column. And, and Spotty answered that it's, it's not here, it, it, year-to-date has a, the end of August, but it doesn't give us the full year. But what was asked?
So you need twenty twenty-three to compare.
Well, we would need twenty-three, what was budgeted for twenty-three and what was actual? What was budgeted for twenty-four and what's actual? I think we have the actual through August, which might be the best that, that he can do, but what we don't have is what we budgeted for twenty-four. And I think a more expanded spreadsheet for what, what the request is, just so you can be sure that, that maintenance is in there, utilities is in there. Again, just because the, the costs are so significantly higher than what's being budgeted. And then your insurance, uh, you're, you're indicating that there's a $4,000 bill coming.
Yeah.
Basically put the insurance at six thousand and what's budgeted is forty-eight hundred. So is it different, are there, are there less requirements with insurance?
Yeah, I don't know. I can't answer that question, but I think so.
The good news is we're doing it now and not in December.
Yeah, no kidding. So what should we do? Have you, have sent those things to you? Have we been doing that? She's in the middle of moving. That might be part of the problem.
I know that too.
Yeah. Are you moving into your office?
We, we did.
Oh, you already did? Wow.
And I'd be interested in knowing what the income is from the programs.
Oh, none, no, we don't.
Yeah, I don't have all that, nothing. There's thirty.
Our programming is all free.
Is there any grants from the state or anything that pay for any of that?
I don't think we, I don't believe that apply for any grants.
We have some other income shown on.
I mean, I think the challenge is obviously for our programming. We don't, we don't charge anything for programming. It's all free.
Missed opportunity.
But?
Might be a missed opportunity.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I think people would stop coming if we started charging. Maybe it's like moms with kids coming in for story time and music and things like that.
Fourteen thousand, other, other, it's other income there.
Slide number, it's a good question to ask.
Yeah, I was just looking at the income here, right? We got ninety-six, I, I assume that's from the town.
Yeah.
And then you had donations of a hundred.
Yeah.
Then you had dividends, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Then you had your books and copies, but what is this fourteen thousand two hundred? Did we get something? That's a pretty large number.
Other grants.
Fundraising, you did nineteen hundred.
It says other grants.
Says other grants.
Capital can be offset.
That's a lot of money that you, you can, and you made twelve months.
That could be, be totally expensive in our project, you know.
Showing his income, have you guys got that? Do you see that money?
Yeah, no, I know.
I was just curious. See, here's the income, it's on it, all there.
Well, the good news is participation is up.
It's fantastic.
Right.
Love, yeah, so it sounds like you want to give us more money than we're asking for.
Well, we, I think that's a concern.
Yeah.
You feel that you, you would have had a shortfall and wouldn't be able to reopen it for a full year. And I think that's a reasonable.
Well, that's why we're asking for the thousand dollar increase in programming because it would have been, I think we would have been okay if we did more on paying. Every education for rich would be a plenty. Yeah, we do. I mean, we've had meetings, she has been very comfortable in the fact that we have enough money to make and buy books. We like, it's our money and she's purchasing all the, a lot of the materials, but.
But she did say, you know, ever call that, it's not for when we talk about it.
What do you mean?
The young money of life.
I just mean that we don't have to close down for that last four months. We won't be calling it, calling it.
Very, very slow.
So we were closer two months on this year.
Well, because we were doing construction, we were actually closed from the end of August last year until we, we opened in April for them. We did a major construction project.
Now do they employ to go pay for them when it's closed down?
We did.
They did get paid.
They, but they were working. I mean, they were not working maybe the thirty hours, twenty-four hours, but Andrea worked out of stratus with, um, with programs, with all the programming. They worked from home. Donna puts out the town hall. Helping patrons, doing books exchanges. So they did a lot of work from home.
What kind of construction was that?
So we reinforced the second, was the second floor. And, uh, because we were told by structure engineer that all our floors are unsafe. Um, and we put in a whole new HX system, uh, heat cooling system. A little more oil.
And painting buildings too.
We paint, well, that was separate, yeah.
And the front access.
That was done, yeah, that was done before. We put in a ramp and new stairs. She had a lot of complaints about access to the library. We're trying to navigate those stairs, the old granite steps.
I'll get you a spreadsheet, just have your stretcher to fill in appropriate lines.
So you're gonna send me something?
Yes.
Okay, I just gotta be happy with that.
He's, he'll understand because at, at least from this perspective, it would be beneficial if it were broken out like this was. He'll, he'll, he'll appreciate that.
Do you have Richard's email?
Yes, I'll.
Why don't you email Richard because now instead of making him a middleman, I have to send it in anyway. All right, you do not have this, I'm sorry. I, I feel so dumb.
So how do you want it? So you know what you're gonna be in for?
Oh, sure.
Other than that?
Then it's on various intel.
Wow. Well, thank you very much again. I mean, honestly.
Did a great job.
We are thrilled with our library.
That's fantastic.
And I hope you are too.
That's tremendous. A lot of accomplishments you all did.
Did you see them? Have you seen the work there?
I'll be all, I heard, I heard before, it's not very safe.
They are, yeah. They're beautiful. You know what? Beautiful. They pulled up that carpet that was probably in there for fifty years. It was disgusting. They were beautiful. It was beautiful hardwood, gold grove wood. So we took it all out. I tell you, that guy that did it, he was a craftsman. He took it, milled it all, sanded it, we did it all back together. It's beautiful. The floor is absolutely stunning in there. I want to look.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mary.
I'll go with you.
I see, I can do it.
You'll be fun and pleasure.
We have.
Good to see you, sir. Ready to come in online again?
Oh, yeah.
This is the other thing. Oh, I mean, Josh is a regular. Hasn't been since I've been, got the soda.
Oh, yeah, a couple of sodas.
What's funny, do you enjoy?
Um, overall, I think our increases were meaning contracts.
Yeah, you're on the bottom of page three and top of page four.
Yeah. Should have nice having separated.
Everyone's correct.
Bottom of page three. So put the first page, Raj, and then you're right here, see? Um, I got the mini version, it'll be a little easier. Oh, this is still fire, bottom of page three.
Oh, wait, the bottom. Play projected and decrease.
Uh, so for the salary wise, I was talking about, we figured that we don't really need the seasonal full-time salary anymore since we got the full-time last year. So that was eighteen thousand increase, I believe. And then we shifted five thousand, that was a part-time salary, just for a month, yeah, for a month. And the other increase was, uh, telephone and internet, majority of that was for the wired firewall. We were consulting, that was fifteen hundred a year, which kind of, didn't see that last year from, so nice feeling, I hope this year. Um, soft waste, that's the usual three percent increase and then going into next July will be the starting new contract. So this one, we're gonna be working with the waste management to get ready, see what their plan is and any other new programs they might have.
Um, will that, will that be going forward this summer?
I'm gonna be working on this one too, to get a new contract. So I've kind of put in what I estimated, looking around, the pricing. And that's coming over to, to even more than I'm trying to take that out. So whatever is there, we're hopefully gonna decrease that in ways.
And the new contract goes into July or?
August first. Um, and the same thing with construction demolition disposal, that's a three percent increase for two thousand dollars. And then department supplies, I found that twelve hundred and fifty. And I just ended in a bargain here. Um, and so thanks to that, uh.
I just could find out a couple areas for our budgeting. To, to our prior discussion, like you kind of saw a little tighter, you said, the total budget in order, close.
Um, so the recruitment retention, the major increase for. Um, so the recruitment retention, the major increase for this year is the sixty hundred improvement of it. And that was for the, like, monkey hat, but I got there, the folks are like, hey, twelve hundred dollars for a month of that.
Well, you eventually have a month that's worth it.
Yeah, yeah. So I think that's compared to both that one, it's a five hundred, I guess. I don't, I don't really advertise it for anything. Second equivalent was the other question I had. I did bump that up to two hundred.
What does that consist of to us?
Uh, so that covers all our gloves, um, youth protection, recreation, um, hydros, clothing, and stuff like that. Um, that kind of varies depending on new staff, when we got one, is all people, well, year after year, it's the same jacket for the longer time. I'll try and kind of offset and switch it out for people. And it doesn't include safety tote shoes. And that's another thing where it depends, if somebody's, we get three people on there, they don't need the under thirty all day, so.
Do you think that's out of it? You basically spent through the end of August, but you were originally budgeted.
Yeah, and that's cause that kind of starts to catch up now, twenty-three. Yeah, I was trying to catch up on some stuff this year, bulk buy with the excess in budget this year, that's why it's not included right now. I guess twenty-two hundred, and then just a little buffer down. And then, department supplies, I'm happy with that twelve hundred increase, because I'm on bulk buy stuff beginning of the year. I did, um, order a bunch of stuff this year, so we kind of got a head start on it. Uh, so I'm comfortable with the fifty-two fifty for department supplies.
What do all this in twenty-three?
Uh, that was all the construction stuff, um, just having extra in the budget. So I ended up buying out of there instead of the, uh, capital reserve. I guess it was twelve thousand in twenty-twenty-three, and I was buying all the interior wing bins, um, stuff for the windows, painting. And that was a big increase this year as well, taking supplies and, uh, just on some designs and stuff like that, so. That's kind of gonna catch off.
So you didn't know that you, you're over that to the end of August, you, you still feel that next year's gonna be different? How much more are you gonna spend, do you think?
This year?
Yeah.
Um, maybe a little bit more, we still have a few more things I want to get, but then it'll be right back to the regular year next year. After that, we can kind of gauge whether we should drop it, the volume here or not, so. But that was one of those lineups, which is a catch off, it's been over consistently, and I'm, except for twenty-three. I believe originally we meant three thousand in there consistently. So then, um, I think edge prices go up too, that's a factor as well, so I think that's a one of the for me.
You're in the fourth.
Uh, that's a separate one then.
You're basically level funding, and you're gonna spend that?
Some of the, um, winter jackets, I'm glad this year, so. General I worked with sent us on contract negotiations, and we're able to get, then, ten dollar increase per week. But then their annual increase on Vex, so we'd save six bucks a week overall, even with increase, so. I think that the, uh, stay here, I don't want to worry about that one either.
The jackets for the guys out with the downstairs?
They, yeah, yeah. And structures this year, so we should also.
Do they, do they also launch a joint with Centos, like the other stuff, or they, you buy them up and they own them?
Yeah, I just buy them out right now.
Oh, contact us.
No, I do that, um, online, I get a cheaper price on them.
What do you do from Centos?
Uh, basically this, making our.
And they take them out every week?
Yep. Yep. Yeah, so we want them to use their washing machine.
So it's just your shirts?
Shirts, pants.
Yep.
Yeah, and we have seven pairs, so gives us a third weekly.
Yeah. Shirt two is making it feel like you put them in the hand dryer.
Yeah, exactly, that's my problem.
Oh, I have to get them all the time, I got.
See, it's very straightforward, but yeah. Just a few contracts, I think these, I think we'll be in much better shape next year and the year after, I hope to be anybody, so.
Like, this is one of those comments that runs really good.
You're also in our pits.
I said one pretty skinny, yeah. So I figured, so I won't say this, so sorry, I'm just working, so.
Do you have the carpet that I stole?
No, I just use it, and if they ever change something and want to come down and fall in the sand area, so, not me, so we're saying, it's a, it's a, um. And if they come down, it's all fresh, we use an upper pressure tray to bring it back, so.
Should.
Theoretically, probably clean material, so. And actually today we're working on trying to get that blast holder set up for shipment, so then we can start ordering the blocks and then three blocks.
I got an area there, yes.
Yeah, so.
Did you get even that too?
Yep.
How's that work?
Slight.
Slight?
Yeah. I loaded a truck the other day with it, and parked them on, visible, you don't have to worry about some new stain running bobcats, so.
So we all want like an automatic, you put it all front, decorated, there's a light on it?
The thing's now nuts and bolts, it's good, took it all apart, so. Yeah, and they kind of threw a wrench in the hole last, I forget, because the truck that they're sending is thirteen, fifteen feet high. We only have a ten foot reach of the bobcat, so I don't have to load it and put contamination in there, just because it's such a not exact of the bobcat we need, so. We're working on building a.
Ramp?
Ramp, so somebody two block high, so we'll get seventy out of it, and then we'll put our grails, so. Got, if somebody tries to walk up and they're driving up, they can, so.
You know, how people that would do that?
Not somebody drove earlier today. So now that'll kind of block that area, you want to know?
So two blocks will get to the right height?
Yeah, yeah, we have a eleven foot reach of the bobcat, and we'll go two feet out, so that'll make plenty of room for us. Very long, that's like wings, the truck just pulls out, and it's basically back and forth, just loading it, so should work out pretty good.
So you must have been like, oh my god, I dropped all this truck here.
Yeah, yeah, that was it. I was waiting for that one, so.
You did it.
So hopefully, uh, shoot about the end of the month, have that ready to roll, and then ship it out maybe in November. Just trying to line up all the, the years, so get everything going, ready for a fresh layer next year, so.
How much of the classes?
Good. Yep, and it's on schedule for the Sunday fourth, I'd say, and, uh, seven five hours of training so far.
What'd you need, a hundred?
Two thousand five.
Two twenty-five.
So, hopefully had it, but, um.
I think you told us it's gonna take you a year, right?
No, I, I'm thinking February, March, if I keep going at the rate I'm going, so that'll give me back a fantastic.
You're at seventy-five right now? Hmm? You're at seventy-five right now?
Yeah, yeah, so, some moving hourly, so it doesn't matter that much, that's, that's a break. But the, kind of for trade show, I don't think that'll count towards my hour, so it's not towards my name, research, so.
Yeah.
I got the twenty, twenty-five TCHs right now, so it's not a research priority, but I may get the two thousand five first, so. It's a game plan, maybe way ahead of it. Interesting stuff too, so I kind of just keep engaging.
Should be a lot more if you're worried.
Yeah, oh my god. Oh. You want the other one?
For the tour.
Yeah, not bad, so.
So for the minute here, we increased recruitment retention two fifty, and protective equipment two hundred?
Yeah, it's twenty-two, you're telling me. Yep. Yeah, I think that makes a whole hundred. So that and trying to turn it down any more. I'm hoping to get out of the compact, but that's a gun to the key, so. I'm doing a lot of research on food waste and stuff like that, companies are available, so I'm gonna be beginning actually, we'll start trying to crack that on there. The goal is to have people do it at their house, which doesn't have come to us, uh, eliminated from eating in the first place, so.
Program, you could research, put in place to encourage people to reduce, reduce cost or whatever they need for a system?
Yeah.
And then educating?
I was actually thinking that's something to enjoy, you know, swampy enclosures, and it'll be there. There's actually quite a few companies, I think it's over a dozen, say, but all depends on what you are from. What you handle, which we can get rid of, um, this home city, I think, home city disciples or something, but they do food waste pickup. Um, education, training, stuff like that, so that would be something we can do for the new year. That would be a big one. A bit, a lot, I think it's, I think that's next, that's thirty to forty percent of waste, turns to food. And you obviously can't compost all day, you can't compost pizza or something like that, but the small petting, I'll still take out quite a bit of food, so. It's a goal. Yep, exactly.
Um, we have, I don't remember exactly, we have some money left over on the feature project that, like it suggested, well, let's give it a year or so and see if stuff comes up. We're at about a year, uh, well, if there's a change. What do they try to do with that, or for references or like that? I'm not sure, we should go back and see anything else, uh, I'm pretty confident.
I want to say it was a picture, that was.
I think really the only thing.
Breaker.
Breaker.
They got the best breaker in town.
I think really the only thing is that could be, is guilty, I guess, and it's even waste oil is such a dirty product that. This, I test drive it at Sunday, because we haven't really needed to use it. Test drive it Sunday, ran it for two, three hours, worked fine, came in Tuesday, turned it on, worked fine, then this morning, I reset it again. Same ships last year, run all day overnight, will shut off, and that's thirty-five degrees in the morning. And then today, actually, I was in the office, turned it on, reset it, fired, so it worked fine. They called me up, radio, and said that there's oil, and stuff over there, and moved through the pressure gauge on the, oh, there. So I don't want backflow or one thousand, so it's diverted right through the PSI gauge, so they're scheduled to come out.
They actually come up inside the gauge, and that broke out, the oil that was coming out of that?
It didn't break it, but it was warm at the bottom, it was boiling, so. They're coming sometime to fix that, this week or next week, so, I think.
All right, so you're thinking that we can use a backup oil supply, so we could actually put oil in the tank?
Uh, we do have.
Or have a furnace.
Hmm?
Or have a furnace, or a burner, or this.
Yeah, cause we.
We have.
Let me answer a question, if you put the waste oil in the tank to be burned, right? Have you added regular oils to that to live, to set out? Can you do that?
The ones we're trying to put in.
Okay.
Cause one, we're having issues with, that likes a thicker consistency. So if I put heat on there, it'll go past all the seals and something over will be jumped out.
I think, I'm sure.
Um, but our new one now makes a thinner blend, so I've been doing cap heating oil at waste oil, and then putting some treatment in it, so it kind of melds it all together. Um, is it, I was talking with Chad, thinking about, uh, either propane or, generally electric, he's a big guy, I mean, it's all.
Yeah, pan is a rated up.
Yeah.
With the microfibre unit, or though.
Cause we do have an old company, but that one's had thousands of dollars, but it's been, maybe used in years, so it's so awful, it doesn't work, and. We actually just rip the tank after that and cut all the lines, and it's completely devastated somehow, so.
Tell me what part of the buildings you eat, you eat where all you guys are near, if you might pull in. That right side building, low windows, that, that he gets heated?
Yep.
And then you break on the other side, there's a new break room, and the bathrooms, right?
Yeah, that's all.
Now, that doesn't run over there, could we cause the bathrooms to freeze up, the toilet bowls overnight, is that dangerous?
No, that's, it's pretty well insulated, um, even last winter, in half one time, I think it was twenty degrees outside, it was still forty, fifteen years, so.
So it's your two systems, one for one side, one for the other side? And they both a waste oil?
Yep.
And I'm saying, one of them runs, likes to run with a little thinner?
Yep.
One doesn't?
Yeah.
Which one likes to run with a little thinner, over the break room, is your one?
Yep, and that's all green too, so it heats up warm, but so that's, that was, that one is actually very well, um. And the energy object, that's our main building on here. That one, we had for four years, and it's still, we've only got twenty-one hundred hours on it. Um, and there's just something wrong, something simple, but we haven't figured it out yet, but. So I'm hoping this time they're gonna back, um, they're gonna actually also filter. Uh, but I have a feeling it's that backflow valve that they placed last year, because we are in same issues, I don't know. Somewhat along the line there, but, um, the water comes from the tree, that's the thing, saves a lot of money on the evil, so.
So is, is the idea of a backup heating system, would that be something you'd be interested in with this money that Michael's talking about?
Yeah.
And how would you feel about something like that, would you put another unit next to that or something, or how would that happen?
Maybe.
Just a straight regular oil, we have oil.
Thing.
Or a propane system? Or you believe in this or something?
Yeah, cause I've actually gone through and kind of memorized a little bit more, and we're gonna put more on the windows, and we're gonna have the flaps on the side, and then flaps on the inside too, so it's a double. Protection, because when with there, but, um, even night time, when everything's closed up, and the heat shuts off, it'll still save forty in there. Thirty to forty, but not working, kind of sucks.
Oh, I know, I know.
But then the bayers, all the hydro, it's cold, so they don't make them rip cold.
Well, the oil, everything gets tight.
And if you can restart it quick enough, it'll run fine, the ones that drop sand below, I think forty-five degrees, burner doesn't like the cold start, if that's, that's issue.
What's the longest period of time that building's down for, nobody there? About eight hours, ten hours, twelve hours, Sunday? Sunday, Monday?
Yeah.
So that went down, the beginning of Sunday, when you walked away, you're done, it done.
That they come, come.
Yeah.
And they're resurfaced.
Yeah, it's, it's bad.
Does mean I'll do certain things, so I'll bleed it, but then even that does fuck it sometimes, so. There's some shit in there, I'm sorry to finish what's on there, that I think itself, so.
I think the money would be, if you're talking about the money, I think you should look into it.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's important.
Oh, yeah.
I, I think that's where the money would be spent.
Yeah.
I think you come up with a plan, maybe a propane system, so it's just money to review.
Just to take it.
It's simple.
Yeah.
You just certainly try and blow it down.
Cause before, I think that's what they're like, old burners, because the building was such a cheese group.
Yeah.
Where we had holes everywhere.
Yeah.
I mean, I went through.
Gaps here with all the door, door frames. Yeah, film from that series, is it just a metal building? Is it on metal, right?
Yeah, it's got insulation.
But they didn't spray it, it is sprayed in there?
Uh.
You got foam sprayed in there?
The new set, yeah, the old size.
What about the old type?
That's just, um, breaking insulation, wall pattern, yeah, so. It's insulated, we had a new roof and cones, it's.
You mean, so your main heat escapes from the open doors of the flaps?
That's basic.
Going in and out with the plug.
It could be the waste oil burner, it'll work them during the day, right? So, it, it works, that's the thing, and.
Yeah.
All summer, so I fill the tank in July, and then empty, write twenty gallons out, filter that, to see if there's any water, sediment at the bottom. Everything is good, got a little bit of sediment, but the most part, it's been sitting there, so it hasn't had enough time for everything to settle, there wasn't any.
Spludge and stuff.
Anything, yeah, so. Um, we do triple filter it when we, when we get it, and then when we pump it in, we'll let it sit, so it settles, and then we've got, um. We've got a screen, that goes in the screen, and then the screen, and so it's filtering it whole way through, so. And then it's filtered before it's pumped, and then pumps out to the burner.
You strip it, who's motor oil, what is it?
Uh, motor oil, hydraulic, yeah.
Not primary?
Yeah, some people do that, but I feel like I've done it a bit more, so. Um, but motor oil, hydraulic, um, transmission fluid, and fuel oil, some gear oil, so they, we don't put a lot of that in there, you're right.
You have to do that, you mean that, so. Well, I think you should go out and look at some numbers, and back to the sort of heating system, I'll be able to.
Wanted to do that in July, but the year got away from me.
Yeah.
And that goes where, and honeycomb, uh, propane heaters, they heat up. And that goes radiant, honeycomb, uh, propane heaters, they heat objects, they'll heat people, they'll heat your boiler.
Hmm.
But they don't heat the air, so you can keep your door open.
Oh, hmm.
Everybody inside is still warm.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, I was trying to bring this on.
What, what is this?
Radiant honeycomb propane heaters, like Hamford's has one in the bathroom.
Hmm, I don't understand that.
Yeah, the door open, you come going, but the heater's right there, it heats the people, and the machines and projects, doesn't heat the air.
Hmm, science. That's way beyond me, I've never even heard this, you're saying like that, that's cool.
I would be able to have it there.
Hmm.
Service hours.
I was thinking about getting some of the hanging heat rings, it's about the same thing.
Oh, like, yeah, yeah, those fire panels, so.
Yep, yeah, that was something about getting, um, some of those for the storage, those can kill the cold air that comes in, so that can help to, um.
What do they call it? What's the name?
Radiating. Yeah, sort of the floors, uh, ceiling.
So I need a heating system on my, like a rubbish.
Right.
I gotta look into that, cuz I was gonna put in what we were just talking about, on the propane things, glow.
Hmm.
Well, I wanted to look into that, where would you go for those? Gas, gas company? Regular gas companies, LNG, you example?
Yeah, so I'll do some research on that and.
Do touch. Trying to get. I think you'd be happy this.
Yeah, I think you'd be happy in the winter.
Tell me that, jump up and all that.
Yeah.
That's painful.
Oh.
It's painful walking with thirty-five, then everybody's trying to get going, or they're all standing around.
It's, it's sometimes bad this time of year, because it's still pretty insulated and sealed tight over the night, so it's, it's.
December, January, wind within. I could eat.
I guess all that.
You got all those stump cells back, if you want to put a pipe in.
I thought about that too, those are cool, get one of those big wood boilers.
I'll figure something out though. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug, fire chief Eric Manson.
Best thing. That's really rough, yeah. I have two, and why do I have two?
Wow, wow.
Don't get me wrong, you guys are cheaters, how's that?
I tried to get them to swallow, they don't like that.
Yeah. So it feels like they're laying there, always there next to me.
I'm learning, Phil, you go right ahead, buddy, I'm falling from your deep.
So the first item at the top, which was kind of was I fire department's ambulance service contract, um, so we're in, have a year, two and a half of our three-year contract, we're done with a year, two and a half, so. Better pay that annual, uh, payment based on July one to June thirty, so our first year was, what, one? Twenty-three, I guess, um, July one to June thirty, so we have half the years on Monday and schedule, and half the years on another, um, or paid on, I'm not sure. So the seventy-five year accounts for the increase for next year.
What was the schedule against July?
Yeah, so it's July, July one to June thirty, so year one was July one to June thirty, and four, and this is twenty-four, twenty-five, and then twenty-five, twenty-six.
So we're.
Just know, we started, we started in twenty-two, didn't it?
July, yeah, I had to try to look at the contract.
I think it was only last year, and it seems like ten years ago.
You know, it started in twenty-two, one to twenty-three. We, we have partial, last year we allocated twenty thousand, it didn't start in twenty.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
That didn't start twenty-four.
Twenty-three, it didn't start.
Nature of science, yeah.
Do you think it's twenty-three, is that right?
Yeah.
Oh, that's what I was saying, yeah. So we're at the second.
Second and a half, that was.
Yeah.
And then what, what are we gonna do to follow?
That was ID? It's, uh, yeah, twenty-eight, two, yeah.
We got a lot of allocating other, ask for, that was, that was, we did last year.
It's a good idea. So that number's just blocked, that's not based on.
Right.
Real, real, real costs are coming, one thing, or I first up.
Yeah.
Chris, I spoke to Chris Coats a couple months ago now, and then over recently, and he expects to have some more updated numbers soon before the end of year. The one we'll be looking at when the contract is over. Yeah. Will be like. So that's not, yeah, not really fire department operational, but official operations at the top.
So maybe you can get any part of that, darn it, seven hundred dollars, so.
So this year, we're under right now, when they were obviously, right, we're at sixty-two and.
Okay, so the twenty-four budget was based on a full-time chief and a full-time deputy, and we've been running with a full-time chief, and three, there's two, two part-time deputies and part-time assistant chief. So that's basically a transition year, showing the new amount of the part-time deputies and part-time deputies. And what we're planning to do, we have a full-time position, and I've just left that in there perhaps, so this is based on current, current staff, and put a full-time position. Second full-time position.
That slide's concept was that the, the, the three we make up have a second full-time position. At least initially.
Right, and the, yeah, the initial, that's, I guess, he became, beside Ken Prosser, was basically more saving, totally doing it with the three guys, if I remember that.
Well, well, it's just a saving, and retire, and, and the money's not the same.
That's the larger reason why we're under, but yeah, there's other factors too, like you want the twenty-four deputy, that's why I'm a numbers or something, so.
So the increase that we're looking at is about seven, seven?
Twelve.
Oh, it's twelve point five? And the major reason for the increase would be what?
If you keep the two part-time deputies and keep the full-time, full-time officials.
If we keep pay, so it's basically payroll, so. You know, we kept the three part-time, this and the one full-time, we assign it.
Chief, you wanna talk about some of the other adjustments you have in fact?
Yeah.
Basically, we're urging the deck chairs, we'll, uh, a little bit down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, for sure, I showed up the, the software, it's a board. Um, just, I don't know what the difference is, I can't use it there, but. Soften that one there, um.
So you, you anticipate that you're basically gonna do half of what you did through, through the underloggers? That the, basically the numbers just stay consistent?
For that, yeah. Yeah.
So next year, you think it'll be flat?
I believe.
Could you, could you talk about the on-call site?
So I'll, I'll check it, and I'm not sure, I need to check the finance, about how things are being posted, so a couple of those lines, and then you says everything, so. I think what this amount is, is if people are doing on-call, they're, the five dollars an hour, they get, without believing it's getting posted there, that I'm not fair to that, cuz at one point, this same count number, I think, was when we get shipped.
Right.
So I feel like the fair amount, but that's, I think that's when some of the things on our call shop.
We started off with a long company, yeah, we started off with, and then we did that, maybe flat. Through that, we also came to the thing on call. But looking at it, if you, if you, if you stay consistent with where you were through the end of August, it would be substantially below, so what, what's worth to change?
But basically, it doesn't have to be below.
It's more than being utilized.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I don't know, which you, where you have your chance to.
Yeah, we've got people that are using a lot.
But it might be an hour, or maybe you can decrease some of that, a little more, call wages, you make, your shift is, and figure out two hours now, or something like that, that'll offset.
So in other words, expenditure is playing, the expectation is that we will.
I don't know, we're gonna get to thirty thousand from cost, if that was like, if every shift, every night is covered, but we're expecting to do more than the, we're at six hundred.
But it could be a way to, uh, take tracks of what you've done here, and that's what we think a lot of, hey? Increase the fee box, say, you know, you're certified, would they, but it's, uh, involved with spiders or something. So does that fall into the, the call training as well? Is that all part of it?
That's basically the catch-all for any of the other, either with some, basically all the payroll that call members use, not, not people that run the ship. They want, yeah, they come in for, if they had training, or if they come and respond to the call, that's a frequent job, it's.
So you're, so this is, this is exceeding what we have year-to-date, your anticipation, and we'll get more participation. My people in the training, and that would take advantage of this, this line, I. So how do we measure that, Eric, how do we, how, how do you, how do you measure the, the participation to anticipate that there's increased involvement?
Actually, I, I don't know, yeah, well, it's just being, I mean, our people, we, Eric, you move up the on-call weekends, we don't get much participation out of that. So. We're, we're at a point where everybody's, uh, time is more precious than what we're offered. So, I don't know, they would, you know, there's more balls taking it, but.
Is the topic driven, i- i- is the training, do you find that there's certain topics that people?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of people coming out, you know, for the race, I guess, you know, they're, they're coming out, and then they're, uh, they're, you know, starting to fire. Yeah.
Just seems like a large increase if, if they're not.
Don't get that's any magic, nine to one twenty-five, if you're comfortable keeping at the one seventeen that it was in last year, I don't think there was any. There wasn't any analysis that we're trimming, that can be finished, or, this is the catch-all number that we kind of put together, or rest.
I love this, yeah. We're getting. I think we want, it'd be, it'd be great that the participation and increased involvement.
Yeah.
Could make you do that. Sorry, I mean, broadly, just a question, those things, I didn't.
Yeah, I, that slide pointed out, I think I mentioned during one of the, uh, like, budget performance reviews, but, uh, cell phones and mobile internet is a ninety-nine thousand percent increase, that was due to a paper, typographical error by me, that that budget was supposed to be six thousand, but twenty-four, and it's six dollars, so. We're getting a little bit over that.
So equipment maintenance and repair. We've, we've had a good year.
Listen, you stop talking. We got this, we got this last thing, you just the other day, and we.
First thousand dollars battery didn't go for the engines.
I'm gonna do a tire.
No, not that one, we've been, we've been doing all right, um. These are some of our biggest stuff lately, is, uh, is, we ended up, like I said, it's batteries on the engines, um. We just put an alternator in the, uh, ladder, and, uh. Those are kind of some of the bigger, bigger things, uh, um, and dealing with some, some, uh, suspension issues, and what the other. But it hasn't been bad, right now, the ladder is out of Connecticut, so, we got a, we got our testing done, they told me that there's a, a couple of, so. We're having those rebuilt, and, uh, in doing so, they also found that there's a small crack, and there were private waterways in the well, so they've been repairing that for us as well. Hopefully get there.
Hopefully, yes, hopefully that doesn't, uh, feed that, or the weather, do that. What kind of medical supplies, leave out the medical supplies.
I don't know, but, uh, you know, babies.
Just for the, for the, for the vitalities?
Yeah.
They supply all the vitalities?
Yep, we supply all, all the, all mineral, we have to speak with all the, but. We explained to Michael, I, um, I haven't really spent too much in that part this year, and that's a lot of, kind of my fault, um, because it's been need-driven rather than by, by a supply, so it's faster to run here, and.
Yeah, cuz you increase the budget.
Went a little bit here and there, and, yeah.
And then you, and you didn't spend a lot, I mean.
I, I tried to work with a couple of, uh, part-time people, get them involved, or, kind of get a better grasp on this, so we can have a proper supply, uh, probably a can or anything like that, for here and there, so. The, the next line, Eric. The, with, with the, was there something that drove?
Yeah, this is our, that one there is our, uh, the quickest drive of that is our monitors came due, our E D stuff, and it was leased through, uh, I think it was the end of last year, I didn't know, I, um, and we've just been paying on that legit. All of a sudden, it started to show up, it's over, but we're getting that, in the process of getting that right now, to, to figure that out, uh, we have not too much renewing, renewal, lease, or upgrade. How much, six thousand be done?
Every.
Every year?
No, no, we, we're, I, I don't follow the, the outside. I think this will be the tertiary, so it's a little. Very nice. So with you, but while you're doing that, you're not anticipating, truly, that it'll be another, well, this will average out to fifteen thousand? That it, it's gonna be, you, you got not funny allocated with the six thousand that you're asking for, or is that something you, you wanna keep flexible, that you have that?
The thing right now is gonna keep flexible, so I get, get, they have a big problem price. The thing right now is going to keep flexible, so I get, get to bring them a big product price. Whether, you know, if we just, you know, if we buy out or.
Okay, what, what, what that costs?
Target monitors.
What's the lifespan?
The last ones we had, it was ten year, three. So there's probably five years to operate it. But these here are pretty, the ones we have now, pretty, I would not say neither of them, they're, they're very, very tested.
So what do you think in terms of time, what do you guys think you need to verify? I don't know, what, what are contract calls for? Is it a couple of weeks? Is it a month?
Yeah, I should have said too long. Because, yeah, we're going to call anyone, just, you know, just do the move, but it's back over. And fortunately, we're going to do some other, other quotes out there. And then push that off. I'm paying attention to it.
Are you going to buy a few tires?
Yes, that was, thanks for talking about it today. We haven't done anything that yet this year. We haven't been talking about it in the office meeting. Got that set up for them. It's what repeats time are to come in and do assessment of what we should, should be replaced. And maybe list the next year as well. Because last year we didn't change much of our tires and so far we haven't done the same with this year, so.
Should we put a new fire pond in or should we put a new hydrant in or something? The tire pond?
That was for ending year.
Oh, sanctionary.
That's for, I remember.
The pond that we wanted to check the depth of or?
Yeah, that's the next one. This was, this was air fresh.
And when they come in, they tell you, they look at the pond and they, they give you a idea, you can pull it in?
Um, yeah, we will. They go as long as, a little longer stick. Yeah.
That's cool here.
But what is your Janus title? What do they charge us for?
Mainly per red.
Oh. And it's mint water, it's, it's the hydrant aspect of it.
Put together and stack so it can be good. So obviously the hundred, I'm like, I just hope that will, a hundred, the normal budget is not, it's just, it sometimes happens over just because it's somewhere that close sometimes. It's like, you know, we're not, we're not going to do much engineering for a hundred or a thousand.
Right.
So you're saying? Eric, on the line above that, your department supply. You, you fill it with four thousand, that's, that's on the.
Um, yeah.
What's that, paper, print two?
Paper, yeah.
How, how do we get a fourteen? Not that you would necessarily know, but that's what's throwing them off.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure on that.
I believe that was my recollection, we, we knew we were going to be under budget. The department is going to be looking like this. I don't remember specifically what that was, but I believe.
I believe that's it.
Yeah. So they're going to keep, so they're going to increase the following year.
So if we don't fund that, that second position and we're under, under the line here. I think we're all part time. You know, we want to get another, you know, part time firefighter down on there a few days. You guys are excited?
Oh, yeah.
There's a few more people. You're going to be working instead of others.
They're, they're pretty limited in their hours.
Yeah.
Limited in the way of the home security, right?
As a company hours.
Yeah.
If we find another retired full planer that can work four hours a week, you're sorry.
Are you saying that will give us the, the room with this new budget that he's presenting us?
Well, just to get him up, you know.
Would that fit in with the budget?
If we don't hire another full time, we can hire another part time, still be enough to fund it. Build coverage. Have them prove their, their flexibility. And that's what they brought up at our meetings.
Is that what you'd like to do?
That is, that only improves the day.
Maybe two days will lead to some.
Right, but then it'll make it.
Yeah. You know? We still have some part timers. Right, we're being.
I would think of being, yeah. Yeah.
We'll be on another one or find somebody.
Or some hand worker chip for, for a different day or something that will help expand the hours that are covered.
Yeah. So we're doing forty hours under full time, obviously, and then the three part timers will be twenty each. Well, twenty each, right? Time's very, right? You're saying three high, another part timer, another twenty hours, that would only.
Help us out.
Fill the days, right?
But still be out of the park. And it would come, you know, if there's a call tonight, it's just, they'd be out of the park. But their shift, we do. Maybe all this week or so. Or three days a week and technically a lot for a day or two. To keep up the numbers, but doesn't affect our tires.
I think it is pretty important that we try to get them, they have another helping cover of all, if they don't.
In a perfect world, I would like to see six full time people.
That would be a perfect world, right?
Well, that's, that's not even a perfect world. You know, that's a, that's a bare minimum to cover your days. That would definitely, that would cover twenty-four seven, seven days a week. We go on every call that we had that. Right. That way there, you still going to need the call departments, but the run of the mill. Kind of calls that nobody gets up in the middle of the night for will be covered technically. So, you know, like we discussed the other day, everybody wants to go out to see the big fight. They want to go out and play it up. It's a, it's a run of the mill, we pick somebody up in the middle of the night. And part of this will be covered through ambulance fees as well. You know, right now we're bringing in ambulance, so we don't try for. So you're paying essentially in charity for us to kind of sit on our hands and watch other people do the part. That's why I'm going to ask you, do you want us to continue with the E N S? That's what that meant. You know, right now you're paying for a service to come in and cover this. And who knows where that price is going to go down. So, so there, you know, part of, part of the ambulance fees you could recover with that could help fund one, possibly two of those positions.
Are you saying we drew away with that, we have our own with the seven, six guys full time? We would have that ambulance on the road, going to calls and we wouldn't have to pay the county for what we paid the network. That's what I'm saying. Because I'm looking at, you know, from two hundred and fifty dollars and something like this, that it probably would be seven hundred. Right, maybe even more than that, Michael?
It's a good number.
It's a good number, right? And how much should we pay for the ambulance? Hundred?
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand.
For next year.
But next year seventy-five, but the year after it could be what, hundred?
The other, the other bid when we run the account is four hundred. Now you can do it twice. When our best rate gave on is, is four hundred.
So I think we probably expect the count is going to be over three.
Yeah, that's the line.
Yeah. Yeah. You mean at the end of that contract?
The cost base, that would be pretty short, but I think the next one after the next step increase is going to be in the, in the six, there's a chance of, you know, hundreds of thousands. It's going to go up. Because they, you know, it's, the way they run it is enterprise finance. If they don't make the money, they're coming backwards from the belt. This is the way I understand it. I mean, it's wrong, but the way I'm understanding it, the way their, their process goes when their capital money goes away, they're going to drag through the numbers.
Real numbers for the future years, we need insurance.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, Jack.
So they couldn't come and say, okay, we just reconcile.
No, I, I always look at that, yeah. And, and, you know, but then they'll work. Maybe it was the next contract and know that then money's going to dry up and only want to do a year contract. I don't know. I know what that's going to mean.
On the basis we have is what rest we leave for.
Right. Well, the team gave us the same, you know, spitball. Team gave us the same spitball. They wouldn't commit to it, but they said they already said all that.
It's risky.
So that's it. Then it's going to be hard to go. If we stay it on, it's going to cost a little bit in the short term. Get this up.
It would be really nice to have the time as long as they go, fighting in that. And we had a solid type of company amount of, we can be able to ten thousand people now as long as we're concerned. Well, yeah, it's nice. New services important there, but in that, that's going to put us up over a million dollar budget for the price of it. Right, Mike?
Adding numbers.
Yeah. But that means we would handle our ambulance, we would handle all our calls, we'd be going, trucks would be going. We'd have a regular, solid fighter pot and you think you'd get the people, get the.
Yeah, if you can find people.
Well, obviously that's going to be a tough part, yeah, but, you know, people want, people right now want to commit to it. Something solid, you know? There's not that many people out there looking for part time or even, you know, on call type of stuff.
Yeah, I, I, I'm the one that believes in the times have changed. It's a new world after COVID, everything changed and volunteer days are gone. And, and I'm a believer in Swansea eventually is going to go down this road. It has to. I think it's inevitable. I, I agree with Bill mentioned the other night and I have to agree with him a hundred percent. The data is going to come. You know, the taxpayers, they want all their services and everything, but nobody wants to pull me out of it. And that's the frustrating part, right? Everybody wants cheap taxes, but they want the best of services. And it's, you can't do both. And unfortunately, we would take the beating. We would take the big beating on this, but. It's a, it's a lot to figure out. Because it's frustrating too, when I go out doing here on the road and people say, how did you do Swansea? What's going on? They can't answer the call, can't answer the calls, you know, and it's frustrating and they're not that, they're not, you know, with the town outside. What other towns have full, full time? Like, does Jeffrey have a place combat?
Jeffrey has a full time queue right now.
Just a full time queue?
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of for duty. They, they run back. But then they run golf with the team. And that's, you know, that's a tough, but that's a very good bet.
Which we're running right now.
It's fine.
Instead of running, there's some problems.
Imagine, how can they not those days? You can't.
You can, you know, be better.
They also have a separate nonprofit ambulance, charter range ambulance organization, so. It's somewhat, it's somewhat similar. Peterborough, that store for Jeffrey, they, they do everything. They do, ain't they the king of that area? They do ambulance out of town, so they have a probably twelve, fourteen, twelve, five, so that's apples.
And tax, you can go with it.
Yeah, tax, tax rate. And the ambulance one that's in trouble.
So with this number there, we're asking him the same increase, right? What is that from the food part of something? Other than it's going to keep the same people on and it can do nothing?
We're, we're driving them on.
We're driving them on. So we're going to keep the same fighter pot and then what this new budget for the twelve percent increase, right? Not going to.
Well, with twelve percent interest increase, you could at least fill in the full time position.
Well, that's what math can fix that, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, this budget is based on the two full time position. You take that, now it'll be less than the, the twelve percent and then now they truly become.
Oh, but wait a minute. So we're trying to still say the same because the other three did a part time and is that full time position? We're not talking about adding another.
It's on this page.
I get that.
But so you've got, you've got them.
Over there.
You got, you have the second position, which Eric can give you full time. You got these three guys here and add it up and give you this. So if you took, if you, if that position wasn't funded, there would be a sixteen thousand dollar reduction and you were wrong with it. Because your overall budget is up seventy-four. It may be an empty way.
So back to what I was originally saying, that's basically going to stay the same. You know, what does that include?
No. No, because that would be an extra position. With the increase, there's an extra full time position.
Okay, okay.
On a level budget, it would be level. It's a six thousand. Okay. Existing, he can not do it.
But the actual budget would drop slightly, so. You know, it's certainly something we have to discuss. But I, I think you got to have a plan and understand what the expectations are.
Absolutely.
Certainly don't say you're wrong.
Yeah, you don't, I hate that, I hate that you don't. You can be a bear or bad stuff, you know? Trying to cut, you know, we, we look at the bad side of this rather than all good.
We have to project.
And that's right.
What you think is going to.
We have to kind of create what, what you think they're going. And, you know, right now that's kind of the kind of freedom they're going to.
So would, would Sly's suggestion of one or two part timers as opposed to a full time, is that something that she is working on?
That would, yeah, to a point, you know, that would be, you know, part of this year, you know, most of this year. Again, it's going to be in that same local, it'd be, it's, covering what we can cover. It would be nice during the day, but you know, not on my altar during the day.
I, I don't, I don't, the complaints are the complaints.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah.
But the likelihood is you can cover a daytime call. The likelihood that it's unlikely that the nighttime call would be covered. Unless it's the, the roaring.
Right, so they can, they can, yeah. Well, I do, I, I, you know, I talked to this rumor, I do, that there's a certain change. You know, we're all, the, the average age of our department right now is somewhere close to sixty.
I thought you were going to be a little higher.
Well, I mean, those guys are starting to drop off, which is not just because they're doing volunteer. But, you know, the average age of our department right now is there and they don't want to hurt. They don't want to hurt someone. No, no, I just wanna see, you know, when you go back to your car, even older guys, I am one of those older guys. I'm including myself in that group. But, you know, when, when the rest of this town, you compare yourself with one year old, I am one of those guys. So. And we have numerous gentlemen on the department that are sixty, forty, so. And ladies. It still doesn't add to my head what he's saying to me, because we're giving them a hundred hours now a week, okay? Now that he's saying, but six full times on that brings us to two hundred and forty hours a week, and by going up a hundred and forty hours, he's saying we're gonna have that department covered twenty-four seven. Seven days a week.
With six guys.
With six guys. Two hundred and forty hours versus a hundred hours. Okay, so right now, with a hundred.
Six people gonna be able to do twenty-four seven. If there's a liar.
They weren't talking, they're fine, I'm telling you that two people on us, they're gonna get you out the day to day. Every day. Everyday style calls, it's somebody to get the truck out on the road, if it is a big call. Yeah. Like I said, the call company's not gonna go away, they need those people.
Well, that's the thing, you need them to step on, you need them actually.
Right.
And we're hoping, and we have a deputy chief. And some of these younger guys who didn't have an officer, would help step off and go.
Right. It hasn't happened yet, they don't go.
This area of having six people and having it happen then.
Yeah, but I'm not talking six people on each yet.
No, no, it's like, you know, six and a half, twenty-four seven, that's two people.
Those two people are gonna cover every day, yeah. And those with that, they're gonna have. Monday calls, it takes the stress off the call company guys, you know, I don't have to get up in the middle of the night to go to this, you know, go pick up Mrs. Jones, or, you know, go enter a, what's gonna be a fire line, a simple fire line. You know, just a noise, you know, a bell ring somewhere. Whereas if you have two guys that are dedicated, they get there, and obviously. Then if it's up, then yeah, everybody's up, you'll understand that. But if it's still nothing call, they're not worried about you having to get up in the middle of the night and then stop to get up the next morning, go to their, you know, they're up regularly at all. Cause that's what, that's what a lot of the problem is, everybody tells them, it'll work, it'll work. Their jobs and their time are more important, they're. More valuable, it's more valuable to them. To make sure that they do this. Well, this is. It's a volunteer side, it's always nice that you could. Do a lot of that stuff, but it, you know, it could be a lot of these things done, it was fine, it is fine. But the requirements, to do all this stuff now, are tremendous, we've had twenty plus years of them.
Stop to think about it.
Yeah. I'm questioning that. That's all I have. Don't change that mind.
So you'll be able to figure these, the questions regarding the monitors?
Yes.
Is there any other equipment that we have on these that's coming up?
Always a bit difficult.
Newly sold, a few years after we got some of the dollars.
Yeah, so it must have been quite a few years you didn't have that pit, cause you budgeted last year when you came under on that, and then the year before, I don't know what it. It's also, so you just do it right now, so I'm last year, and. I wasn't completely very sure, we couldn't budget far, but I did ask Lisa, of course. Couple months ago about it, she called, so I was thinking, I think there's something we can keep paying the lease, it doesn't matter if they're new, it just keeps doing itself. And took it as, all right, well, that's. It's a good, it's, it's possible, you know, pleasing.
You can keep paying it, but it's not like.
Right, right, and then, yeah, not knowing what it was, who could he budget for. Of course, now I know. So fortunately.
Seems like there's something else.
Is that one?
And just if it wasn't budgeted for, would it be around three thousand now, if the actual was forty-four the year before?
It wasn't posted there, it was posted to that service before.
Always was.
So it wasn't in there at all? Very, while he's here, just a big kudos, kudos, I would appreciate it, Chief Matt said also kind of, so I would kind of, uh, we're gonna do part of the transition.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
That was wet this morning.
Oh, well, yeah, I don't know what they, some, some sort of bad, some sort of pump there, pump started up and ran, but didn't spray water anywhere, so I. Took the alarm and it really ruined it, so. No water, no waxing, no damage, yeah. That's good. Yeah. What happened? The lights went short around about six twenty, so for whatever reason, their, their sprinkler pump kicked on, but didn't pump any water anywhere. And then alerted the alarm. It tripped the alarm as well, yeah, so. Turn on the irrigation. No, it was a building. And no water turned on? No, it didn't, it's a wet system, so it's designed to be, doesn't water any pipes, so they really just specialized with the pump, and that's where it stayed, and tripped any of the other companies, so. The whole lot, so. That would be terrible. Right? But it's a crazy situation, well.
So wow. How many gallons do they have in their systems?
They have a hundred and ten thousand out there buried in the, in the parking lot.
That would be catastrophic.
Yeah, so. Basically, the shelves aren't fully yet either.
But they're ringing it in.
But they are ringing it every day, they're filling up. I can't tell that. Was that, I can't tell that. I had two gentlemen, they, they got, they bottled water. Put it in, they bottled water, and. Pumped it in, five thousand gallons. Took time. Yeah.
Wow, twenty-seven cars.
Then they empty it, they rebuild it. Yeah.
Thank you, all right, we're doing well, but y'all are doing well. Get back to new business. We're sitting in town, across three point three acres, Southwest Community Services, parcel twenty-eight Main Street.
What do you want, what do you have in mind for? Looking at me, make a motion to. Yeah, I think I read that, sorry, my mind was still like. Page two, page two, uh. Okay, yeah, I read that, yeah, make a motion, and. Go ahead to that.
Second. Should be protected, except the demolition, three point three acres, Southwest Community Services, parcel twenty-eight Main Street, map one ten lot seventy, could be added in that one ten lot seventy-one, an authorized expenditure of two sixty-five hundred dollars for a transaction, cost of three thousand two hundred and fifty from the conservation and acquisition, capital reserve fund, and three thousand two hundred and fifty from the fire station's capital reserve fund. Anything further? Want to say aye? I'm not making the ayes, I just have a. Health trust insurance readable. I was curious, there was a notation there about long-term disability in one of the headers, it wasn't on, going after it.
In one of the forms?
Yeah, yeah.
Might have added us that as something that could have priced, but.
Oh, that was, yeah, it was right at the top.
Right.
Said long-term disability coverage, there's no rate change, July twenty twenty-five.
Please.
Page four or five. And then I saw that you're, like Jim said, you're researching that.
That's what I said.
Right up under health trust. Is this book? Page four.
Oh, back of the letter. Oh, so I think that's just a form letter, they said, so if we did have it, there would be.
They plug in a blank at the end.
Yeah, they're just telling you about what happened, yeah, long-term disability rates didn't change for us.
It was zero for you.
It is, yeah, sometimes they're scoring, and you're still waiting for a callback, right? So we're.
We're gonna wait. For the HR director for Swansea, the man, to call back.
They probably called, they're interested in that position. So we're gonna.
We're national today?
For the job fair.
And then you can, have a pleasure. Good job, mate.
So Phil's tired. We're gonna get her home.
That's right, no more questions. Motion to operate, there's a real wait to actually sign until we find out what's gonna happen with Longyear, but this at least lets me know what the rates are by now, so she can get her own enrollment paper started.
Get on with the motion.
Further? Did you say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and you are authorized. And so, mass complete street supplementation grant letters are sent.
So we talked about both these spring applications a couple weeks ago now, uh, we have drafted letters for both of them, we appreciate the consensus, we can keep forward. That's on, we didn't notice.
For me.
We're signing. Consensus. Any old business?
That work on the Grange roof began this week, and.
Oh, they're not, pretty good today, they're on some. They're screaming about dating.
I think that's one of the other issues.
For sponsors.
Um, I don't see the one, but keep an eye on some of those other events that I listed in here, we got pretty good guidance for folks who are interested, and then next month they will be at Swansea, we should. You've got all those other events on the calendar, right, Jake?
The rhythm, I got the liquor store, what was the other one?
Twelve Perry Lane tomorrow.
What's that all about?
Ten thirty. Kelly's a good.
River Drive.
Yeah.
Twelve Perry Lane, what is the route? Oh, it's twelve Perry Lane. Oh, oh.
Get your guy out.
Ten thirty? You gonna be there? Saw you going. Really?
Scissors are big.
You will not be there.
Are you kidding?
You will not be there. Your champ, what do you think? I, I said I'm gonna go like this.
Billy, you're the free one.
Make sure you check what you accept for gifts before you go there.
Public input.
I saw a hand up, he was just stretching.
Twice, I can't stand.
Keep it private, it's fake.
Well, that'd be not public session. Wow. We're gonna make it on the road. You're the most interesting guy, thanks for all the favors.